Hi. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. And before I jump into the agenda, I just want to explain that we have two trustees available by telephone. And so we're going to be passing this around with the hope that they'll be able to be part of the conversation without having to pass the actual phone around. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone and take a roll up. And I know that we are, for me to say, I think grace might be on the way. The trustee Decker's not here. Trustee Decker's not here. Trustee Kendall is participating by telephone. Trustee McDonald couldn't be here. Lena Polperson couldn't be here. Sheriff Disturbe couldn't be here. And Anne Wake is participating by telephone. And then we'll introduce the student trustees when we get to their trustee reports. So with that, that's item number one on the agenda. So number two is to stand and say that we're going to leave.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. So item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda as intended. Request to change the order which will talk about items on the agenda. Seeing that they're complete agenda in the order which it was presented. And now we move on to approve minutes. The first set of minutes is from the special meeting and work. And trustee Decker is not here. She's right up here. So that first set of minutes to approve is from the August 20th special meeting and work session. Is there any changes anywhere to make to those minutes? Seeing none. Is there motion to approve the minutes from the August 20th special meeting and work session? Moved by trustee Lorenzen is there a second? Second by trustee Smith. All those in favor of approving minutes from the work session special meeting from August 20th, please indicate by raising your hand. And Heidi and Anne, are you voting for the motion or against it?
(Inaudible)
Okay. So that is approved unanimously by all trustees present. Now we go on to the special meeting and the student trustee orientation we held on September 10th that are upon on page eight. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the student trustee orientation on September 10th? Moved by trustee Lorenzen is there a second? A second by trustee Newell. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the student trustee orientation on September 10th, please indicate by raising your hand. And trustee Wake and trustee Kendall, are you voting for the motion or against it?
For.
Trustee Kendall?
For.
Okay. So that is unanimous as asked of all trustees present. And then we finally come to the board of trustees regular meeting from September 10th, 2019. Are there any changes to that first set of minutes? Seeing none. Is there motion to approve the minutes from the board of trustees regular meeting from September 10th? Moved by trustee Smith is there a second? Second by trustee Lorenzen. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 10th regular meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall? For or against?
For.
Trustee Wake?
For.
Thanks. So that motion passes unanimously. Now we come to the section on the agenda for public comment on non-agenda items. These are any items that anyone wants to bring to the board's attention concerning items that would fall under the jurisdiction of the MCPS district. So these are items that we won't be discussing later and therefore it's just simply public comments. So if there's anyone here who would like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, we have a podium over there. I don't think that microphone needs to be turned on. And so if you come forward, state your name, and if you have an unusual spelling of your name, just spell it so we make sure we get it correctly in the minutes. And we try and do the comments just three minutes. Any public comment on non-agenda items? That was more talking than public comment. But thank you for all being here. Now we come to the Sealy Swan High School. And so Julie? You had an introduction to the people.
Might as well use the mic, right? Can you hear? Okay. Great. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Mr. Kellen Palmer. He is our new principal here at Sealy Swan High School. Kellen grew up in small towns in Montana, but we hired him away from Douglas, Wyoming, where he gained his experience prepping for this job as an instructional coach there. And he's hit the ground running. And you can see he is game for just about anything, including a cheesecake cook-off, which was evidence here tonight. So I'd like to welcome Kellen and introduce him to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, who was able to make it out tonight. We're glad to have you in beautiful Sealy. So far, we're 35 days in today, I think I counted, and we're off and running. Things are going really smoothly. Academically, all students are performing well, and we're proud of the growth we've been able to see. And, you know, we have goals to keep increasing our opportunities for all of our kids here at Sealy, whether that's academically, athletically, clubs, or whatever. So we're working on that. And I'm excited for what the next few months and the rest of the year brings. So thank you, everyone, for coming down. And one of the awesome things we do here at Sealy is our PRIETS program. And so the three people kind of in charge of that are Mr. Holmes, Mr. Doherty, and Ms. Holmes. And so I'm going to turn it over to them now for their presentation.
(Inaudible)
This is the third year that we've started the PRIETS program since we started the PRIETS program. And I have to tell you, the very first time, the very first time that Virginia Haynes brought the PRIETS program up to Sealy Swan, it came in a big box, and it was full of papers. And I looked at it, and she said, "We'd like to see if you want to start this program here." And so I sifted through it, and I thought, "There's only one special ed teacher in this whole school. How am I supposed to implement this and do everything else?" Then I happened to think back about 10 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, when your superintendent was the principal at Sentinel. And I started a program there for the life skills students, and we started a shop program, a woods program. And we made some various products, and we actually sold them and used the money to put back into the program to buy more materials. And then I thought, "Well, hey, maybe this won't be so bad because we have a shop teacher here who's a pretty nice guy, and he might want to do something like this." So I talked to Mr. Holmes and showed him what we needed to do, and from there, we started our PRIETS program. I just finished filling out the information on the last, the two years ago, eight students that graduated from here, the special needs students, all at IEPs. And I'm pretty proud to tell you that all eight of those are either attending a four-year college, a two-year college, or have full-time employment in a position where they can go up in management. And I think it's in part due to this program. Some of this activity that we do, job exploration counseling, work-based learning experience, counseling on opportunities for enrollment, and comprehensive transition, workplace readiness, instruction, and self-advocacy. Workplace readiness, we have individuals that come up here one day a week for a two-hour period, and all of the students on 504s or on IEPs attend that. In there, they learn a multitude of things. And all of the things that we have to do, we put on these little jobbies, and they're able to keep them as freshmen, improve on them as sophomores, juniors. And by the time they graduate, they have a very nice, complete resume. They know how to fill out an application. They know how to interview for a job. And at this particular point in time, we have several students that are still students here in school actually working part-time jobs while going to school. I have one student who is continuing to work at Cory's Market. He graduated four years ago. He is now the manager of the produce department. So it's a good program. It's a program that the students can learn and gain a tremendous amount of knowledge from to assist them in getting a job and keeping a job. These are the people that are involved. Virginia Haynes, Kellen Palmer, myself, Sean Holmes, Katrina Stout, who used to be. Now Michelle Holmes is also in the business education this year. Where it starts, students are prepared for the workforce in my class, where they learn about how to fill out job applications, create resumes, participate in mock interviews, how to access vocational rehabilitation and/or support for further education and self-advocacy. This also is a program that is done through Department of Health, Human Resources, and vocational rehabilitation is a prime department for that. They do come up here. We do have counseling sessions with all of our students. All of our students are enjoying the vocational rehabilitation counseling sessions. We talk about many different subjects, mainly in the workforce, how to assess being successful in applying for different jobs. And then vocational rehabilitation also does job training for some of those students, where they actually put them on a job and work with them and consult with them while they're on that job. So it's a real integral part of the program. Vocational rehabilitation has been a very good friend for us up here and also for our This is how it works. This is Mr. Holmes' department. Thank you.
So when Mr. Doherty came to me, and we talked about this three years ago, there were some concerns I had. One is, we don't have a lot of space in our shop, and Mr. Doherty came with these grandiose, "We made all these picnic tables, and we sold these." And I'm going, "I got 10 feet." So I wanted to come up with something that combined a couple components. One was, I wanted the kids to be creative, and I wanted them to be able to design. So we, through our CNC machine, our router, and through epoxy, the kids are making not only cutting boards, but we just got done with a Montana Rivers cribbage board. We're doing some juniper small tables back here. Those are all kind of finishing up this year and some components from last year. So it's giving the kids something to sell, to earn the money back that we're using, but also, it's not just woodworking. It's they're combining more than just woods in this project. So this is the, last year, we made a really big table. The kids wanted to do something grandiose. So we had a student had some juniper. He brought it in. We made a jig, cut it up on our vertical bandsaw, which took seven of us, I think, to hold it up and cut it, but we got it cut. And then we made this big, kind of a conference table with epoxy. So it took, there were probably eight kids involved in this whole process between the cutting, the sanding, the planing, and then we got into the pouring of the epoxy. We had to get it clamped down correctly so that it was level. We had to seal it so that the epoxy wouldn't run out. If any of you are aware, epoxy goes for about $2.50 an ounce. So it's not cheap, but it does give the kids that element of design that they really get excited about. So here is, oh, I told you I was going to do it. Yeah, back one, please. Pour. Yes, please. So this is our final pour that we did. We poured the blue, and the blue is just a color, mica coloring that we put in the epoxy to color it. And then we put a clear coat over the top of it. They have to use a heat gun. They have to get, again, it's about sealing and leveling to get the pour correct and getting it spread across so that it works right. And this one right here, this is this year. Please, Mr. Palmer. Thank you. So we have Bo Sloan, who was in the program last year, so he's in Woods 2. And then we have Mac, who is a freshman this year in Woods 1. We combine our classes because I only have two of them, so I have Woods 1, 2, and 3 in all, both periods. So I have Bo helping Mac get his first project, which is basically a nameplate, cut out on the CNC machine. And then it kind of, Bo's kind of my guide that the kids go to when they want something cut out, and he helps them through until they can become comfortable and do it themselves. So, and then we have three students down here that are sanding on their cutting boards. That's their first project. They had to incorporate the CNC and some epoxy for a cutting board, and they were happy with them and took them home. So when they do take them home, they just have to pay me on, "I got messed up," Mr. Palmer. There we go. So just some finishing cutting boards and then the finishing table there. We don't charge the kids if they're taking them home, except for the epoxy. So for a couple dollars, they take the cutting board home. There we go. We also made this table last year out of pine. We donated it. My sister-in-law works for the American Cancer Society. So we donated that for a fundraiser for them. It was a really big hit. So we're hoping that maybe that catches on, and we're going to try to make some more of those tables with the blue epoxy. My metals students, again, same, they're making the legs for the big table and for all the tables we do, so incorporates not the woods, but also with the welding classes that we have. And now Mrs. Holmes is up.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Holmes said, these students who are on IEPs or 504s are working side-by-side, regular ed students. So they get the component of working in an environment where they're working with non-disabled or non-disabled individuals with the disabled individuals. So, and that is something that they really need to work with in order to get out into the workforce, because they are going to be working with regular individuals, if you want to put it that way, non-disabled individuals. So these kids are going to get an opportunity to work with that right here at school and hopefully transfer that back into the workforce when they are out of school.
All right. They gave me just one slide. This is good because I'm new to this. New to this program, but in my prior job, I helped with jobs for Montana's graduates, which had similar skills. So when they told me about this, I was definitely on board. Some of the future goals, the way I see them, to revise the current, the kids last year with Katrina's help made a website, and we would be revising that, looking at other ways to market these things, coming up with more products, like we did the cribbage board that was just this week, cornhole boards, kind of get ideas from people. And then one of the big things, I got to help with this in my prior job too. We had a job fair up here that involved the eighth grade class as well as the entire high school. And we had people from, it took a lot of us. So we're not doing it every year, but hopefully next year that will come back. And then this, hopefully, nope. There we go. That's just a preview of what the current website looks like, and we have a student who's going to be updating that for us. And that's all I had.
You didn't have it all the way on.
What?
You didn't have it all the way on.
The button wasn't all the way on.
No.
It's not now.
Yep. Might be to turn it down a little. There we go. Well, thank you for that update. We're just trying to figure out if that's the end or the end. Looking at notes and going to add something new, but thank you so much for being here and for sharing that with us. It sounds like an amazing program. It gives all students, particularly these students, that qualify, an opportunity to gain life skills that will serve them really the rest of their lives. And I have to say, they produce wonderful things, especially, I really love the metal recovery tape. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to reports and announcements. So first we come to student trustee reports. So we want to start with Sealy Swan first, and then go into Big Sky.
(Inaudible)
Yeah, I'll send you. (Inaudible) Are they going to do it up here or over there? You can stay seated if that makes it easier to read your notes. It's just more than, so the other trustees can hear.
All right, so...
And first, if you can introduce yourselves, because we're happy to see face with the name and the voices that we can hear itself.
That's a good idea. I'm Eric Collins.
I'm Claire.
We're the student trustees of Sealy Swan, which is why we're here, I guess. Recently, we just had Homecoming. It was a blast. That was in September. But we're just grateful for the staff helping us run it because it was a lot of work. So recently, we just did a mid-season for sports, as in volleyball, cross-country, football, and it's a good season so far. Football is 4-2, so that's pretty good. I don't know what volleyball is. But I can't speak for cross-country either. Anyway, we have volleyball away in Victor this weekend and Darby. Cross-country, maybe in our league. And on Saturday, oh, Friday, actually, I'm not sure, Friday or Saturday, there's a football game here in Sealy Lake. It's Friday. And yeah, it's sports for you.
And then as far as our clubs, we have Leo's and Student Council. Leo's is going to have a highway cleanup this Friday, and then Student Council, we're hoping to get started on a golf project with our disc golf course. That'll probably be pretty fun. And then we have our Destinations for Education group as well, and we're starting to fund rates for that, and we're going to be leaving in the spring. And so we've just been running concessions and doing some bake sales. So had some success there, which is good. And that's it.
Thanks. And why do we need to settle next, just because it's winter, moving days for sense? So I think we want to introduce yourself to everyone here.
All right. Hi, I'm Isaac Goddard, and I'm a student trustee at Sentinel High School. So here's my report. Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well and having a good evening here in Sealy. Last week was Homecoming week at Sentinel, which brought with it a bonfire, powder puff football, and a dodgeball tournament, and purple and gold-covered halls. On Thursday, a pep assembly was held in the main gym, including performances by Sentinel's marching band, dance team, and cheer team, all of whom helped showcase the halftime show for the upcoming football game. Sentinel's dance team, cheer team, and marching band also had a very successful Friday night and Saturday morning. On both dates, the Sentinel halftime show and the Grace Homecoming parade, they performed their routines very well. The elected Homecoming princesses, queen and king were also at the parade, riding on the Sentinel student float. Sentinel Band has a concert this coming Monday, and Sentinel's choir performs on Tuesday. Both are rapidly preparing for their performances. The Homecoming football game ended in a win for the Spartans, defeating the Big Sky Eagles 35 to 7. Sentinel football play against Helgate High School is coming Friday, October 11th, at 7:00 p.m. Sentinel's girls soccer also took home a victory in Helena this weekend, beating Helena Capital 4 tomorrow. Our girls team played against Helgate earlier today at 3 o'clock, and the boys are playing as we speak. The golf team had planned to compete at the state double-A tournament in Great Falls earlier this month, but due to early snowstorms, the tournament was rescheduled and is taking place today and tomorrow. Sentinel wishes all of our golfers good luck in Great Falls. Cross-country recently completed in the Mountain West Classic at the U.N. Golf Course against schools across the Northwest, from as far away as Spokane, Washington, and Pocatello, Idaho. Sentinel listed some of the other competing teams for their annual spaghetti feed on the night preceding the meet. Last weekend, Sentinel's cross-country team competed in Butte with both the boys and girls teams placing fourth with outstanding performances by Bergstener and Tanner Clump, who each placed 11th in their races. And in academic news, the MCPS Learning Lab has moved to Grizzly House 9A, which is north of Sentinel's 500 building and is just east of the new-planned MCPS Administration Building. The Learning Lab's purpose is to provide a good educational experience for struggling students in transition. The Learning Lab's mission is to be able to help these students make a successful transition from their previous experiences to school and work. The program includes math, language arts, current events, social and emotional skill building, and a career planning. Sentinel's library celebrated Band Books Week with free tape for the student body during the last week of September, and will soon welcome author Robinson Wells, who will present to Sentinel students during the school day. The PSAT is also taking place in October for 150 of our sophomores and juniors. This year, Sentinel's PSAT is being held at the Fairgrounds at 7:45 a.m. on October 16. Sentinel students and faculty have had a successful September and are looking forward to continuing on that track through October and beyond. We wish you all the best this month and look forward to notifying you of all the exciting things happening next month. Thank you.
And then if you need to prepare, I will have me to Big Sky. And just to let everyone know that Helgate and Willard student trustees weren't able to come up to this meeting, but we will get their updates next week for next month after the first school meeting of the month.
All right. Hello. I am Isis Ball from Big Sky High School. I am one of the student trustees.
Hi, and I'm Fiona Morrow. I'm the second head of Big Sky Duo.
Okay. Start off with information from Big Sky in regards to our MTSS program. This year, the start of this year, we focused on the importance of tradition, reviving old and creating new traditions, and creating unique pride and positive school culture. We continue to celebrate the launch of our new Eagle Code, which guides our students in behavior as evidence in the positive way in which our students are attending activities. In addition, we honor the return of celebratory traditions such as assemblies, school dances, and our traditional Homecoming bonfire, which this year was the first time we've had it in anywhere from eight to 10 years. Not to mention the revival of our Big Sky fight song. We are Big Sky proud of all of our firsts we are experiencing, the continued traditions and the revival of those forgotten. A huge shout-out to our students, staff, and community for their engagement, involvement, and support.
All right. And I'm here to update you on Big Sky Academics and Construction. During our Urban House Finals, we were given the opportunity to check out all of the construction things that are moving right along, and Jackson is working to enclose the new skylights before the snow flies. Last week, we celebrated the retirement of longtime social studies teacher Mark Mo. There's a great send-off on PBS NewsHour, which he showed every day for 26 years. Big Sky will have the first family engagement event on October 15th at the Missoula Food Bank, where students and their families can come out and cook together. Thank you.
Thanks. All trustees who are here, and now my friend, Heidi. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll turn it over to...
Oh, she's got more things.
Oh, you do have more things, great. Sorry. So this is Abe Johnson.
This is Abe Johnson. I know. I went through a Halloween preparation for this evening. Abe Johnson would love to be here this evening, but he is practicing football for the big crosstown game that Helgate and Sentinel will play with each other on Friday night. Abe Johnson says, "Students are settling into..." Abe Johnson says, "Students are settling into the new school year and things at Helgate are running smoothly. After a successful homecoming, which included the first-ever Helgate Hall of Fame ceremony, the beginning-of-the-year rush has started to die down. Student government is now devoting most of its time and resources to the upcoming Spirit Wars." Another issue that the administration has tasked student government with is making proper use of all the new additions to Helgate now that the construction is done. Helgate Fall Sports are about halfway through and looking to finish the 2019 season strong. Soccer is still undefeated, and football is looking to get another win against Sentinel on Friday. Cross-country boys are looking to make a run at a state championship this year. Clubs at Helgate are getting greater involvement than ever before. The National Honor Society is off to a great start with many seniors working on incredible service projects. Key Club, another service organization, volunteered only a couple of weeks ago. We are excited for all things Helgate going into the end of the fall and winter. My sincerest apologies for not making it to Seeley this evening. Thank you, Abe.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Superintendent Watson for the superintendent's report.
All right, so my report is not as, never, ever as detailed as the student reports, but that's okay. They do a great job. Just a couple of things before I forget, it's Pat's birthday. I just wanted everyone to know that. We don't have to sing him "Happy Birthday" now, but maybe later after the meeting.
We have cheesecake.
We have cheesecake, yeah. Two things I wanted to just update the board on. First of all, at the last board meeting, we talked about the Transformational Learning Grant, and I did, with the board's permission and approval at the last meeting, I did submit that grant on October 1st. I was at a Board of Public Ed meeting last week and found out there were twenty-nine school districts across the state that submitted, and they all submitted before 10:00 AM on October 1st. And nineteen of those school districts submitted within the first minute and a half on October 1st. So we will find out actually if we receive the grant at the next Board of Public Ed meeting, which is in November. So I'm sorry I have to wait just a little bit longer, but I think we have a pretty good shot because I think we were within the first minute and a half. So hopefully, we got that grant. But I'll update you more as we go along. The second thing I wanted to make an announcement about, October around the country is National Principals Month, and you all know the very important job that our principals do. It's a job sometimes that is unpredictable, and our principals do a lot of problem-solving throughout the school day in supporting students and supporting staff. But this is our opportunity in October just to recognize the job that our principals do and congratulate them on a job well done, but also thank a principal. So this is National Thank a Principal Month, and if you're on social media, use hashtag #ThankaPrincipal, and that will get onto the national website. So encourage you to, when you get a chance and you see a school principal this month, just thank them for their job and what they do for us.
Thanks for that report. And I want to thank you. Rob was actually poised over two computers, which had preloaded it, and I made sure that both of the computers were sending in the grant request at 8:00 in the morning. So thanks for doing that. And now we move on to number eight, which is the Consent Agenda. And this is the time that we put items that we see on a routine basis on the Consent Agenda. What that means is that board members won't discuss the items, although we do take public comment, and they are per country routine items that we usually see about every month or every other month. So there are three items on there. And as I indicated, we won't be discussing them, but is there a motion to approve the three items on the Consent Agenda? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Second by trustee Newble. And as I said, we won't be discussing it, but we do take public comment. Seeing no one moving toward the podium, and all those in favor of approving the items on the Consent Agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
And trustee Wake?
Yes.
Okay, so that the items on the Consent Agenda are approved unanimously. Now we move on to new business. First is a grant application summary that Karen Allen is going to tell us about, and you can find it in the packet on page forty-one.
I won't use a lot of detail, but this comes from the creativity of our Family Resource Center specialist, and she applied to Town Pump Charitable Foundation. And this is to purchase items that students need of a personal nature. So I think this is to outfit the Family Resource Center so that the students who come visit can take care of themselves with those kinds of personal items that they may need.
Thanks. Oh, it says my person over there to leave, but I'll send it over. Can't be two places at once? Well, she can describe the second one. But hold on, this is not right.
Okay, the grant I'm speaking to is on page forty-two in the board packet, and it comes from Linda Simon, our Health Services Supervisor, and it's a grant for just over fifteen hundred dollars that she is requesting from the Missoula Lions Club, which is actually the downtown branch. I know there's a Lions Club up here in Seeley. This is from the downtown Lions Club. And the funds will be used to purchase color vision screening tools, eyewash equipment, and other equipment used for outfitting our safety bags and equipment for the schools such as stop the bleed equipment. So that's what that'll be used for. Thanks.
Rob, do you want to switch that with this one? Because we're not fighting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. And so the first item I gave, one, is to approve the grant application summary that Karen described. Is there a motion to approve that grant application summary? Moved by trustee Smith, and second by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the grant application found on page forty-one, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
Trustee Wake?
Yes.
So that motion passes unanimously. Then we move on to the grant application summary that Julie described. Is there a motion to approve the grant application found on page forty-two? Moved by trustee Newble. Is there a second? Second by trustee Gettr. So is there any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the motion, in favor of the motion to approve the grant application summary, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Wake?
Yes.
Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
So that also passes unanimously. And then we move on to B1. This is an information item, and each of the trustees was asked to do a little homework because this is a set of documents that we see every year at the Montana School Board Association meeting that's coming up in October. Delegates to that meeting are asked to vote on various items that have been proposed either by the MTSSBA staff itself or by individual school districts. And so it's quite a large packet. And so, Rob, if you want to just kind of jump in, there's one that's got an actual recommendation, and the rest come without a recommendation, I think, if you're right.
Yeah, so these actually start, I know it says in your agenda packet, page forty-three, but the actual resolutions start on page fifty-three. And we've got extra copies up here if folks want to follow along. But what I thought we would do is just, well, first of all, I'll tell you, Pat and I discussed these, and we believe that Resolution Number Six, which is Laurel Public Schools and Joliet Public Schools allow a limited waiver of tuition, wouldn't really apply to us. That particular one is looking at a unique situation where students are having a choice between a K-12 versus a secondary school district. So I don't believe Number Six really applies, but by all means, if you want to talk about that one, we're welcome to. I guess what I'd like to do, with your permission, is just run through these as quickly as possible. And Chair Holland, if you want to see if folks have questions or comments on each one, is that how you'd like to do it?
Sure. Let me just say, there is one item that's before the specific permission submitted by school districts. It's one is Montana School Board Association gap analysis, and that actually is the one that comes with the recommendation to support that when there's a vote at the upcoming meeting. And then the rest are submitted with no recommendations.
Okay. Does, yeah, do you want to talk about that first one or get any feedback on it?
Each time there is this meeting, and I'm sure, and trustee Wake serves as our representative on the MTSSBA board, and also she's coming up as the immediate past president as well, but the MTSSBA staff and board looks at how to look at a gap analysis and make sure that there's adequate funding for public schools in Montana. And especially since it took a lawsuit at one point to make sure that there was adequate funding for public schools in Montana, it's something that the MTSSBA staff and board look at very carefully. And so this one actually does come with the recommendation to support its approval. And so given the amount of work that they usually do, that would be something that I think that our board would want to support. But trustee Wake, do you have anything you'd want to add?
I don't think so. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I think it's us trying to be, the state school are trying to be mindful of all schools in Montana and what they might need for the gap analysis concerns. So I don't know if I even want to go deep from here, but that's mine now.
And so what really this is doing is, there are four of us who will be attending this statewide meeting. It will be trustee Wake, trustee Kendall, trustee Lorenzen, and I. And so this is a time for the rest of the trustees to give us any specific direction they would want to give us about voting. Otherwise, we would discuss as a group and choose how to vote on issues that we think might impact our school district or which might further statewide situation that we want to support. But other than that, so normally, when it comes as a recommended for approval, it seems like something that we, when we're at the meeting, would probably discuss and vote to approve it. But that would be following a discussion with it, because we all go as delegate members to the conference.
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
I just have a question about one of the provisions of it, which is under the approving access to opportunity for students affected by poverty, which it appears, and of course, it's very, you know, this language is always really complex statutory stuff, but, and my understanding is that we're looking at requesting basically a twenty percent increase to A and B for low-income students, and that that would replace a couple of other programs that currently exist, including the American Indian Achievement Gap Formula element. It says, "In lieu of that, and the current at-risk formula element." And I just want to check in on that and make sure that, you know, that sounds like something that on the face of it would provide increased funding for lots of students, but I would be concerned that it would be possible that it might have some unintended outcomes. I just wanted to know what the thinking was behind it.
Trustee Wake, could you answer that question?
I really can't answer that question. That's why I'm writing this, so I don't know where I'm coming from. If you have a concern about that, we can take it to the delegate instantly and ask a question there, but he can answer for everybody.
And so I would suggest...
If anyone has that question.
So if trustee Gettr can send me her question, then I will carry it forward. That's a great suggestion. Okay. And trustee...
If you look in that paragraph up from the bottom, the second sentence up, it says, "This effort clarifies the opportunity gap as a systematic issue, not inherent differences in students' capabilities." So I think the goal of this is to step back from identified groups who are at risk for some reason or based on their ethnicity, and instead identifying the systematic issue, which is poverty. That's what it looks like to me.
Well, can I respond then?
Yeah.
I think that's exactly my concern, is that if we're actually taking away a program that was intended to address historic disenfranchisement and disempowerment and, you know, colonialism, it's really of, it's a pretty great import to change it to a straight-up poverty approach, potentially. And I just want to know a little more around it.
So we'll get an answer to that question. Thanks. Okay.
So just for brevity's sake, I'm just going to start on a couple of these. So Resolution Number One and Resolution Number Five are fairly similar. They intend to do the same thing, which would be to create a non-voted levy for health insurance. And one of the things that we, as a district, Pat and I discussing this, would be cautious about is, under Resolution Number One, they recommend or they suggest that possible proposed resolutions, perhaps some of the opposition might be if they try to create a statewide health insurance pool, which we would oppose that, as our health insurance fund is fairly robust from what I understand. So, but not to say that Resolution Number One or Five require a statewide health insurance pool, but it could be an unintended consequence of creating that non-voted levy. But basically, what they do is they ask for permission to change state law that allows school districts to use a permissive levy to raise money for health insurance. So that's one and five. Can I keep going or... Okay. Just stop me, please, if you have questions or comments.
I just explained, although this is probably more relevant to the four of us that will be at the meeting, but delegates can take a position of action, which means they want Montana School Board Association to take action and otherwise support it in some way to make sure it's initiated. Or you could just ask for support, which means you don't have to take action, but we do support generally the idea behind it. Or you can just take no action. So at one point, an option would just be not to take action on items that don't directly impact us.
Item number two, Resolution Number Two, is to change the inflation factor. So currently, school districts are funded, assuming the legislature approves it, they're funded with an inflationary factor. What Columbia Falls is purporting in this particular resolution is that the inflationary factor that we've received over the last three legislative sessions does not come anywhere close to what it really costs to run steps and lanes for teacher contracts and those sorts of things. So they would like not to tie the, not to tie the inflationary factor to Consumer Price Index, but rather look at a different model for that funding formula. Pat, stop me if I'm saying anything wrong. Okay, moving along. Three and four, I know that you assume that I should know a lot about these, and I don't. Both of these are coming from the Bozeman School District. And what I'll tell you about Number Three is they're basically asking for a change in state law that would allow a school district to take funds that have been raised and transfer those funds that have been raised through fundraising and transfer those funds to a nonprofit foundation. And the reason this exists is because the Bozeman School District had raised a lot of money before the existence of a foundation, so they raised money and put it in the school finance account, and they'd like to be able to transfer that to a nonprofit foundation. So it seems kind of particular, maybe only affects that district. I'm not sure if it affects others, but that's the first one from Bozeman Public Schools. The second one, item number four, is probably something of high interest for all of us, but again, there's no real solution here. But number four, item number four is improve access to driver's education. And so I'll just be brief here, but driver's ed teachers are some of the most difficult teachers applying. In state law, it's required by state law that they have to be a certified teacher. It's also required by state law that you have to run the driver's ed program through a school district. That's why you don't have any private driver's ed programs like other states do. See, that's why you don't have any private driver's ed programs like other states do, but that's all in state law. What makes it difficult to find driver's ed teachers is there's only one place in the state where they receive training for certification, and that is in Haver. So if a teacher wants to go get a driver's ed certification, they have to go to Haver. So what this resolution is asking is for perhaps a change in state law around the certification process. Or if it's not a change in state law, it could also be a resolution that's proposed to the Board of Regents to encourage the driver's ed training program to be somewhere else other than just Haver. So those are the two things they're asking for in that resolution. And Dave, I'm assuming driver's ed teachers are tough to find here as well?
It is. And traveling to Haver is a big issue.
Number 5, we already talked about levy for health insurance. Number 6, I mentioned earlier, it doesn't really apply to us, but it basically would allow a district to have a limited waiver of tuition. So the way tuition works in our state, if you charge tuition to one person, you have to charge to everybody, or if you waive it for one person, you have to waive it for everybody. So they're asking for a permission to do a limited waiver. Number 7 is an interesting one, and it sounds like this is already happening in other states. But Number 7 would ask, allow districts to install a camera on a bus, on the outside of a bus, I'm assuming, to catch people that don't stop for the bus. So when a bus stops and they put their arm out to let students on the bus, the oncoming traffic is also supposed to stop, which is just a safety thing. A lot of times they don't. They just breeze right by the bus driver or by the bus. And so this would allow a bus company to install cameras to catch those people that are driving by a bus and not stopping when they should. The one issue that I guess maybe have a concern for us is we don't own our buses, Beach Transportation does. So I'm assuming if we wanted to do this in Missoula, we would have to go to Beach and they could increase our contract in order to install these cameras.
We get any of the fines?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know the mechanism to get the, you know, that footage to the police and get the fines and all that. That's an interesting question. Number 8, Lockwood School District, again, asking for a funding mechanism to expand career technical education funding for middle school. So what's interesting about the career technical education funding that we currently get, it's designated for 9 through 12, the federal funding that we receive. And so the state of Montana really has no mechanism for us to use our CTE money for middle school students. I would be a proponent of this. I think it's a good idea. I would also encourage the board to consider that if we were going to be a proponent of this at the legislature, that we don't just split the current pie and add in, you know, middle school, that we actually increase the pie. Because if the legislature said, "That's fine, but you have to split the current funding you have for middle school," then it doesn't really help the cause. It would be great to get some more funding in addition to what we get for high school, which is specified for middle school. Moving right along. Number 9 and Number 12 are fairly similar. Number 9 is asking for special funding to be set aside for a summer school. So we currently, unless we use Title I money, we really have no funding to support summer school. And so what Number 9 does is it asks the legislature to proportion a section of the A and B money for summer school, specifically in grades 9 through 12, specifically for credit recovery. So this is, that's the way that one is written. Number 12 is fairly similar. It's a six-week summer program that would be for pre-K. So this would be, you know, without the, as you're well aware, the pre-K issue has come up on the legislature for a number of sessions. This is sort of in absence of a true pre-K program in our state. This would create a pre-K program in a summer school setting right before students enter kindergarten. So that's Number 9 and Number 12.
For Number 9, that funding part that you were discussing, that we would get additional A and B, like 50% of the spend of what we get now, we get one and a half for those, that sounds, so basically, to your point before of not-
Yeah, it would be additional A and B. Yeah, additional A and B for 9 and 12. Number 10 is, is pretty vague. As I read through Number 10, I support what they're encouraging, but it's really vague as to exactly how it would work. But basically what they're asking for is money to be allocated to OPI to support teacher education around trauma-informed classrooms. And so, you know, strong supporter of that notion of getting teachers trained in that trauma-informed school safety issues, but again, not quite sure how it would actually work. Basically all Number 10 is asking for is money to go to OPI to create a teacher training program. And then Number 11, I think is a good one. Right now, K-12 teachers can offer dual enrollment, but they have to have the proper certification and the proper background. So if I was a, I'll just give you the example, if I was an English teacher and I had my bachelor's degree in English and I have my master's degree in curriculum, for example, I wouldn't be allowed to do dual enrollment for English because I don't have a master's degree in English, if that makes sense. So the university system requires at least nine credits of a master's to be in the field that they're going to teach the dual enrollment in. So if I was going to teach dual enrollment of English, I'd have to have at least nine master-level credits. What Number 11 does is it provides some funding for teachers to go back and get those nine credits so that they can do some dual enrollment in their school settings. I think this not only helps small schools, but it helps large schools, just getting more teachers involved in the dual enrollment.
And just to summarize, what happens at the annual meeting is that we also hear from the MTSBA staff. So the person that Trustee Wake mentioned, Lance, is the executive director of that organization. And so one of the things that we would be able to hear at the actual meeting where we're voting on these various items is how MTSBA has prioritized these items. Because what each one of these items is asking MTSBA to do is to use its lobbying power to lobby the next legislative session to support changes in the law. And each of these schools have asked for fairly specific things. And so the ones that don't really apply to us, I would be thinking we would ask them that, you know, the MTSBA figure out the position they want to adopt, but we just don't have a position. And then we have identified a few where there's either a really good question that you'll, that I can carry forward, or there are some things that we would support in theory, but we would like to hear from them in terms of how they want to use their resources in the next legislation, legislative session as well. So, does that explain everything for those of us who've been to MTSBA's delegate, Board of Delegate meeting? Okay. So with that, it's information only. Any public comment by any chance? Okay, so then we-
Will we talk about this again, or just send comments to you then?
Yeah.
Just send comments to you.
Yeah, because the next, this topic will happen before our next important meeting. Yeah. So, and the next one is to approve the personnel report. And Dave, is there anything of note?
No, it's a normal one.
Okay. So the recommendation is that the trustees approve the items on the provided personnel report. Is there motion to do so? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Second by Trustee Smith. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
Trustee Wake?
Yes.
Okay, it is, the motion passes unanimously. Then we come to a few board policies. And just a heads up for the board, our legal counsel has gone through and looked at our board policies to make sure they're consistent with legislation that has happened. And so we have about 18 to 20 of them that we have to make changes, sometimes small, sometimes more substantive. And that's why we're going to be seeing first readings of board policies in order to catch up with the last legislative session. So that's where we're starting to see these ones, which seem the simplest to bring forward now, then the other ones will probably need legal counsel to be with the board meeting to explain some of the changes. So the first one is to approve the first reading of board policy 1111, election of trustees. And as you can see from the background information, it's just a clarification about how you have regarding elections by acclamation. Do you want to add anything? So as you know, if there's less than or equal to the number of trustees running for a spot, then there is no need to have an election. You can seat the trustee by acclamation. And so this just clarifies some language in our policy that matches up with what the legislature has done. So, anyone else have any questions on that one? Seeing none, then the recommendation is to approve the first reading of the board policy 1111 and post it for public comment. Is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Newbold, is there a second? Second by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? I have a thumbs up from Trustee Smith. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the first reading of board policy 1111 and authorizing this posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
And Trustee Wake?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Then we come to the next one, which is 1112, resignation of trustees. This revision is to remove the 72-hour period in which our resignation limit had been submitted could be withdrawn, and now it requires an effective date. And so, and then there's the last line of the policy, as a trustee retirement is different than a trustee resignation. So that particular line, it's just not in the right policy. So those are the recommendations from Board Counsel. Is there a motion to, are there any questions first? So the recommendation is to approve the first reading of board policy 1112, the resignation of trustees and authorize posting for public comment. Is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Second by Trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? I'm glad, I just want to say I'm glad that our counsel been going through and catching some, you know, somewhat hard, you know, you just gloss over it, but she's realized that we really need to pay attention to some of these changes. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving board policy 1112 and have it posted for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
And Trustee Wake?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously. Then the next one is board policy 2320, field trips, excursions, and outdoor education. And this is one that actually, Rob and I discussed, because we know that there's been times, especially with the robotics team, where they don't even qualify for a competition that's happening across the border in Canada. But by our board policy, they were supposed to submit their request six months ahead of time. And so this would revise that board policy to allow the board to make exceptions for circumstances such as that. And so there's a copy of the policy that's been drafted by Board Counsel, which would allow that to occur. So, any questions? Oh, yeah. And so we'll make it not just outside the county, we'll fix it. So there's, yes, thanks for catching that. So we will correct the word county in paragraph 2 to say country. And with that amendment, is there a motion to approve the first reading of board policy 2320? Moved by Trustee Decker, and thank you for catching that. Is there a second by Trustee Smith? Is there any board discussion? I guess I'll just comment, it's always nice when our policy can reflect the realities of what happens in circumstances in the school district. So, any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving policy 2320 as amended and posting it for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
Trustee Wake?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously. And then we come to the last one. So this is 5220, and this is a new policy being recommended by Administrative Legal Counsel because under the Every Student Succeeds Act and Montana law, there is language that is, suggests that we have to, more closely near Montana law, but cover the similar provisions under ESSA. So this is really getting us in line with state and federal language in this statute. So, is there any questions? Seeing none. Trustee Lorenzen?
You said it's a new policy, but we've already got a cross-out under the second to the last line in the first paragraph? Or is it simply a modification and that's the old version?
The cross-out was by our legal counsel, so I believe she, yeah, I don't know why that's a cross-out. That should not be a cross-out.
Or is it wanting employment instead of any job?
Obtaining it, obtaining, obtaining new employment, so I-
This is a mistake that they created.
Well, I think she took that out because she felt it was redundant. We can check with legal counsel, but this is a new policy and she mirrored the MTSBA policy, I believe, in the state law. But I think she just took those two words out, so it read better, but I'm not sure we can clarify.
Yep. And I'm guessing what happened is she started with the draft proposed by MTSBA and she found some of which redundant. So she cleaned up their version when proposing it to us. That would be my conclusion. Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is to approve the first reading of board policy 5220, which is prohibition on dating and evading sexual abuse, and post it for public comment. Is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Decker and second by Trustee Smith. Is there any board comment? Seeing none, then I will clarify with Megan, you know, why there is a cross-out in a new policy. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of approving board policy 5220 for the first reading and authorizing this posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee Kendall?
Yes.
And Trustee Wake?
Yes.
So that motion passes unanimously. And then we always reserve time at the end of every school board meeting for public comment. For anyone who couldn't get here at the beginning of the meeting, you want to make sure if there was any item you'd like to bring to our attention on non-agenda items, you have a second opportunity. Anyone want to comment on non-agenda items? Seeing that, want to thank everyone again in Sealy for their hospitality, well, especially and thank the student trustees, making this tour of that school, which we really appreciate. We got to see a lot of the great spaces being used for a lot of great workers here, so thank you for that. Thanks for the staff from Serena's Dinner, and especially thanks to Kellen and Karen for having a really good idea of having a cheesecake bayed off. And Mrs. Holmes too. So, I don't know if she's part of the original bet, but I think she jumped right in there, so thank you. And I don't know if you're supposed to vote for a favorite cheesecake, but I think we all agree there's about four or five or six of them that we all like. So, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Yeah.